Call to order, the Waverly City Council, January 19th, 2015. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as distributed by our city clerk, Carla Guyer?
With approval of the agenda.
Is there a second? Motion in second and council discussion.
We need to strike, make an amendment to the agenda, strike item number two under regular business that has not gone before P&amp;G at this point. So it's hard to set a public hearing for something.
Due to a weather delay at that meeting.
We did not have a quorum at the last planning and zoning commission.
You want to make our agenda shorter?
We're shortening up the agenda.
Regular business item number two?
Yep.
Motion to amend?
That's my motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Monday's agenda is before you. Motion is already, okay, now we're voting on the regular agenda as amended. All in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Close with no. Comes our agenda. Is there a motion to approve the January 5th, 2015 minutes also distributed by our city clerk?
Move approval of the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, council discussion. All in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Close with no, unanimously approved. We at this time invite any public comments on any items not on tonight's agenda. Public, any comments, please?
We've had some discussions about not to exceed contracts and we ended up paying beyond with the not to exceed because we had an addendum to the original contract. Question is, if we have a not to exceed contract in the future and we use, a director could use our policy established in resolution 1094, which allows for directors to engage in contracts of 3,000 to, I think it's, I think it's 5,000. That particular resolution was passed in July of 10, 2010. So are we going to establish a policy that does not allow resolution 1094 to be used to create addendums to not to exceed contracts? Or are we going to have not to exceed contracts that can be exceeded by addendum using resolution 1094?
Do you want a hand letter or want that in writing to come back to? We'd have to research.
Yeah, staff doesn't have an answer for that tonight.
Thank you. Any other?
In the audit from our Williams and Company, he talked about our reserve cash that we have to allow us to operate from July to October of each year until we receive our tax, property tax revenue. Do we have a fund where that 2.2 or whatever million dollars is stored in? And does that 2.2 include fund balances left over from projects that are completed but not all the funds have been used in that particular fund project?
Is there a short answer to that or you want that?
I didn't think of the questions. The 2.2 million is in the general fund, which also includes library fund, golf course, and I believe hotel motel.
Are there any funds that have remaining balances in the fund that the project has been completed in that are in that 2.2 or is that on top of the 2.2?
Any projects that are completed, we try to close out at the end of the year unless we think we're going to have some expenditures in the next year and then we just leave that open. Most of the time closing out projects, additional funds might get transferred back to maybe TIF or local option, wherever we took that money from.
The source.
Right. Not back to the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
Any other items from the public?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council and administration. Just wanted to stop before you tonight and first off say thank you for your support of our application that went in front of Iowa Economic Development Association. And as you all know, 10 or 11 days ago, we were informed that Waverly did not receive any of the CDBG round six funds. And as a developer, I always like to make sure I, as best as I can, identify why something was decided, whether, you know, where'd we go right, where'd we go wrong? And this one, while all the information isn't out, I wanted to share with you what I've been able to identify rather than have you assuming, well, something hit or miss happened. Well, what appears to have occurred is that when the developers went to Grinnell for the introduction of the program, we were told that their focus was going to be infill, high-density, shovel-ready number one, and multifamily housing. After receiving better than 80 grant applications, they, it appears, changed some of their focus. And the focus of what's primarily been approved is shovel-ready historic preservation projects. Historic preservation and shovel-ready in a developer's eyes, much like our own downtown upstairs development, shovel-ready is kind of a hard thing to label that, but it takes a whole different situation than building new. So things changed and that's primarily got, where the funding dollars have gone. So even though they tell me that there will probably never be around seven, those monies are dried up, Waverly is out of that loop. As a developer, you know, with your housing study that you've taken time to develop, Waverly clearly has a very large need for quality, affordable housing. As a developer, I intend to work my best to see that I can't help participate in that in the future and look forward to asking for your support. As a presenter for Maxfield said, it requires public and private in order to pull something off in these small to medium-sized markets. And I believe Waverly is going to continue to be a wonderful place to grow and develop and I hope to be part of that, but I wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Any other comments from the public? We have 11 items on tonight's consent calendar. They are, we have two requests from WHKS for the dry run, one for phase two and one for the 20th Street Culvert. We have JV Engineering with a bill for the Second Street Northwest Storm Sewer and Street. We have Waters Edge Aquatic Design, you need to be paid for some swimming pool work. We have Design Alliance for the Public Services Building operation. We have Stanley Consultants needing to be paid for our Parkway work. We have three liquor licenses, one to our Veterans Post, one to Joe's Nighthawk, one to Dirty Dog Bar and Grill. We have a wine permit request from Teet Nursery and we have the December cash disbursements to pay. Is there a motion?
Move approval of the consented calendar?
Second?
Second.
Motion in second and all in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Close with no, unanimously carried. Regular business item number one is the third and final reading, the Waverly Rental Code Ordinance. Come, come to the mic. We've got a short agenda. We'll take a little time to hear what you have to say. We didn't have...
No public comments for, under the consent agenda for the disbursements of December 14?
It had been pulled, nothing was pulled. So that's why we took it.
Can you ask a question about, a couple of questions about those? Two claims?
Real quick, go ahead.
Asher's Law Firm for $3,235 for negotiating employee contracts, I assume. We heard Saturday that they're going to get a 2.8 or 3% raise, which has been historically the same for the last 10 years or so. How can we justify paying a law firm to do those negotiations when we didn't gain anything?
That the main question?
And then the second one is about the, we have the life insurance that we're paying that we started in June of 14. We started out at $861.09 for a premium and now in December, that premium is 2179. It's a $1,318 jump in premium for the month on life insurance policies. I don't know whose lives we're insuring or who the beneficiaries are, but that's a substantial jump in premiums in about six months.
Thank you.
I can answer the second one, but the first one I'm going to let Phil take care of. So the life insurance, that was probably a two-month bill, okay? We pay about $1,011 to insure 71 full-time employees' life insurance. So we pay about $12,000 to $13,000 a year for that.
Thank you.
As far as the question about employee contract negotiation, I know last year, I think negotiations with our police unit were over the course of four months and various day-long meetings. This year we did it in one day. We'll probably have one short follow-up conference call, but it's not just about wages, it's also about, we've totally changed healthcare, we've moved from flat-rate contributions to percentage contributions, we've changed that over time, we've looked at early retirement policies. So there's a lot that goes into it rather than just a wage adjustment.
Thank you. Regular business item number one is the third and final reading of our Rental Code Ordinance. This is a milestone for the city of Waverly. City administrator, any momentum comments before we motion?
Anything to my esteemed colleague?
Yes.
I'll just mention that we did not intend to change on the third reading, but the definition of what was compliant in basement apartments, I don't think, there was some communication gap between what the county official was saying and what we got on our, in our code. So we wanted to make sure it was accurate and that we wanted to follow what the building code required. So what we did is we simplified that and made it what the building code requires and that's, they have to be sprinkled and have a dedicated easement, or a dedicated egress to the outside. That's what it's required in a basement if you don't have an egress window.
You can see that on the top of page five in a light gray underline.
Okay. We can pick that up under council discussion and motion, please.
I'll move the third and final reading of ordinance 991, adding to the current rental code ordinance of Waverly, Iowa, to ensure that structures are safe, sanitary, and fit for occupation and use.
Second, please.
Second.
Council discussion.
I guess there was clarification, I guess, on the group that will help administer this, I guess, from the landlord association. You've kind of got that all ironed out and...
Right. We are going to have a checkbox on the registration form that allows any landlord or representative to be on the list for the mediation participation. So we are going to take it from the people to check the boxes. That's our, that's how our list is going to be formulated.
Public input before we vote.
Dwayne Little Waverly. In all this, I find it kind of humorous that the city puts itself out there to be able to determine what is safe and sanitary and whatever else for housing as though landlords aren't doing that already. Something that comes to mind is that rental property is a business. The fees that's going to be attached to this, going to the landlord will be passed on to the tenants. Tenants are already from, input from the landlords are having trouble paying the rents because you're seeing groups of people sharing apartments so they can share the rent, so they can afford to live indoors. That all rental housing has price points and there's a price point for rentals in 175, $200 bracket as well as 6, $700 bracket. When we price the $175 units out of the market, then I question where are those people going to live? And that any roof over your head that's worn is a whole lot better than living outdoors or sleeping in a car. So are we creating an unintended circumstance when we pass this?
Other public comments before we vote? Roll call, vote, please.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Neindorf?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Resnichek?
Yes.
Gade?
Yes.
Genghis?
Yes.
Third and final reading of ordinance 991 is unanimously approved and we need to thank everyone who's worked so hard, the council who's analyzed this and kept with it and gone with all the different questions that have risen, the landlords who helped draft this, and especially to the staff, a special thank you. Planning and zoning, yes.
And if I may say briefly, the timing is very good as this will be a, the whole structuring of occupancy by family is going to be a legislative issue this year. So the fact that we're ahead of that and have that all addressed here, I think is, it's nice to see the stars and planets align sometimes, so.
Yeah.
And we're happy that it's passed.
This is a great moment, really. Regular business item number two, we have dropped. Regular business item number three is to consider a motion to purchase two new refuse trucks. City administrator, any comments and city engineer, probably?
You may recall, we've been talking about this for a little while. We did have some bids come back on semi-automated and customized trucks a while back and we decided that that wasn't the right route for us right now. So here we have bids back in and Mike and Brian can explain what we're looking at and why we think this is a good option for moving solid waste into the future, something we're very passionate about.
Well, what I'm going to start out with is our recommendation is not to go with the low bidder and I'm going to show a video that's going to demonstrate the differences between the two. The low bid that did meet our spec was from McNeelius for a net price after trade-in for the two vehicles of just over $366,000. That is not our recommendation due to the type of mechanical system that uses in it, in the collection arm that grabs the container. Our recommendation is to go with Truck Country for about an additional $10,000 in price. And I guess, if, Brian, if you want to come up, I'm going to play the video first of the McNeelius truck and this is the one that we are not recommending. And really the focus has to do with the mechanical arm that comes out and grabs the container. This is a very different style truck than we currently have to do the residential collection. This is a cab over design as opposed to the more standard engine that sits out in front. So this is going to be very different than what we've been accustomed to in the past. Our staff have had demonstration models come in that we've utilized on the route and, again, I'm going to like to have Brian fill in some of the details as we go forward here.
As you watch these videos, one of our concerns, especially with the one, is the arm coming out and the heights involved with that.
Right into the mic.
Okay. When, when we get going on the video with the McNeelius truck, it has an arm that reaches out and then we call it, we've called it the candy cane because that, in the shape, that whole system will go out 12 feet and so that whole arm will reach out and go out and grab the can. With some of the areas we have in the alleys and out in the streets with tree branches, we're very concerned, our operators are concerned about that hitting garages and tree branches and then causing damage to the truck and to the property owners. Also with that system that stays about 12 inches off the ground when it reaches out and any snowbank or any different elevation, it would drive that arm right into the dirt or to a wall depending on where they have their can set. We do have different elevations that would be a problem and especially during the wintertime. With the crown of the roads with the angle, that mechanism would come out at an angle and in some areas would probably dig into the yard.
And what they show here is when it's nice and being, pull right up against the curb and grab the container. In so many of our locations, we may have vehicles parked on the streets, so we're actually having to reach out a long ways. And that's just the nature of our community that we do allow parking on the streets next to where these containers would be.
So this is the one you're not recommending?
Right.
This is one we're not recommending. The other thing that concerns us, that they've had the six-foot reach in production for a few years, this is the first year they've put the 12-foot reach into production. And I guess we're concerned about, there is no models of this truck in the state of Iowa operating currently. We asked for a demonstrator model and they were going to have to bring one in from Connecticut. Just concerned that there's, there's no experience with that right now.
The other thing is, is that the arm protrudes out.
Yep. In the traveling, it'll be 115, the vehicle will be 115 inches wide. Normally you don't want, with a DOT, I do believe it's 102 inches wide. So in the travel mode, when you're not picking up the garbage, the mechanism that's down at the bottom that lifts up the container has to be brought into the top and travel that way for it to go down the road so it's not sticking out beyond the side mirrors of the vehicle. And we were unable to get an answer of how many of these units are currently operating in the United States. But we do know there are none in the state of Iowa.
There must be one going around some nice neighborhood.
What's that?
Scottsdale. El Mirage.
Because our concern is that top of that, I'll call it that candy cane going out, especially 12 feet in some of our alleys and reaching where the cans are set, that some of the garage overhangs would be, definitely be a problem.
Notice here, they had to pull up right behind the vehicle in order to get to it. So, you know, they kind of show nice, they only show when it's nice and convenient. The next video actually shows some more challenging situations where they've got just a few feet to reach in between a couple of vehicles and get the container. So this is a really good image of how that, that arm sits outside the wheelbase as it's going down the street and travel mode over the highway, everything has to get flipped up inside. If you see enough of that one, I'm going to...
I could watch it all day.
It's kind of hypnotizing.
Over Christmas, a projection, move on.
Love robots.
I can even add some sound here.
You could, but you don't need to.
So this one, you can see there's trees. You have the overhanging trees and stuff and we've got to deal with that as well. So, you know, this, this is being demonstrated in a lot of situations that we have right here in Waverly.
This, the arm currently that's being shown has been in production since 2010. Currently, there are quite a few in the state of Iowa. Matter of fact, the city of Cedar Falls has one of these units.
Yeah, the other, the previous one looked like it'd be a little bit of a high wear. It basically had a steel gear running up a rail that...
Right. This is much more compact. You see it reaching all the way out in between vehicles.
I work in Scottsdale, but maybe not in an ice storm.
You talk to the Cedar Falls folks?
Yes, they do like their units. They have had the Wayne one for quite a few years and the operators really do like this, this operation of this arm. It is, a lot of guys operated this and the, it's easy, it's operator-friendly for them.
And everything tucks inside the wheelbase. I'm going to jump ahead here because there's a section where they, we feel probably 25% of the time our driver's still going to have to get out because there's extra garbage that has to be picked up and we're going to have to use, basically empty the can and then reuse the can to throw those extra bags in in order for it to be emptied because the height, you got to get it in like 10 feet high. So this is another reason why we're trying to get our customers trained to use the city container because we're not simply going to be able to throw it 10 feet high to get inside the truck.
The other thing that we're going to do with the arm, there'll be what I call a bank board towards the back of that cradle area so that if people have an extra bag, if our operators get good enough, if you just set the bag on top of the container, they can tilt that back and have that lean against that bank board, bring it in and dump it and then that way if we, you know, try to educate the public that way and they set the bag on top of the container, it would minimize them having to get out.
So here's a situation where the driver has to get out. I mean, this is really good customer service, I guess, if he's going to walk up there. We're not savaging.
He missed the last can, so.
Yeah. So...
Somebody thanked him out of the way.
Maybe she couldn't get out or something.
You can oper, you don't have to climb back into the truck to operate it, that you can actually operate it from, from outside. And this is a really important feature because our, our drivers are still going to have to do this. They're going to have to get out because of those extra containers. They're gonna have to get out because of those extra containers or extra, you know, during the holidays or at a special event, you got some extra, extra garbage you need to put out.
The other thing with this arm, it's capable of lifting 1,000 pounds. The McNeilius arm is only capable of lifting 550 pounds. So with the 95 gallon containers that we use on the commercial side, there can, depending on what they put in them, there can be quite a bit of weight in them. So that was one of our other concerns about the, the lifting capacity.
One thing I noticed, so every time it sets it down, it, it flies so fast it leaves the lid open?
Yeah.
Can you turn it, can you slow down a little bit?
We've discussed, yeah, we've looked at that and then, you know, that's gonna have to be the operator working at that, especially that swing back and.
Yeah. I know if he could slow down cycle time, so it just doesn't swing the lid back.
Or snuck. So if you won't watch this, it's on YouTube, you can just.
You didn't watch.
Probably will, actually.
An interactive video, they can hear our discussion.
No, I mean, I, I appreciate you guys going, going to the extra step there to, you know, demonstrate the differences and instead of just describing them to us, you know, showing it to us that.
The other question, there seem to be a two cubic yard difference in capacity, if I read the information.
Yeah.
So that means fewer trips from Waverly down to the landfill, that type of thing? So any additional costs will probably be offset by some of the travel, fuel costs, those type of things?
We're, we're, we're crescendoing into a motion.
Have you, I guess I'm curious, speaking of that, have you done any, I mean, it'd be, it'd be good to know if you, comparing, basically a simple financial analysis on the new truck. You're, I know you're, you're trying to trade them, so you're, you're avoiding expensive repairs on your current trucks, you're buying new trucks. It'd be, I think it'd be good for the, for the people to know kind of the financial difference and, you know, a, a simple ROI or.
Well, this, we, well, that's, we have a fleet equipment replacement schedule and, and we look at the optimum time to trade in every piece of equipment.
Okay.
So we look at what is, you know, kind of our, our target for a pickup truck versus a, a end loader versus a garbage truck and a street sweeper. You know, they're all different. And every year that is updated and things that will happen is that if, if we have a vehicle that's performing very well, has lower than expected maintenance costs, we will extend it out an additional year. But on the other side, if we have a vehicle that is turning out to be more problematic, we may advance it on the replacement schedule. So we are continually looking at, when is the optimum time to have good resale, but also do it before we start incurring accelerated repair and maintenance.
So that's just part of that plan?
Yes.
Yep. Rigorously figured out beforehand, so.
It, it's done, it's done annually, yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
Could you formal motion, David?
Uh, yeah, go back. I, I move approval of purchase of two Freightliner Newway 29 CY automated side-load refuge packer trucks from Truck Country of Cedar Rapids, Iowa, for the net purchase of $376,888, including $95,000 trade-in allowance for two 2007 International Refuge trucks.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, council discussion.
And you expect these in July? Being serviced in July, is that right? Delivered in July anyway?
10 months from order date, but I'm hoping that it'll be quicker than that, that once we get it ordered, they'll try to.
I thought it said July.
What's the problem is, is the chassis. Currently, right now, with the truck manufacturer chassis, they're saying are 10 months out. Sometimes they put that as the extreme conditions and they try to work at trying to find chassis a little bit sooner for us.
I just ask, cause it said, in the, I think it said July.
I'm sorry I didn't get that updated because the McNeilius was in six months, the, the Newway trucks are 10 months.
Am I reading the right that the, off the bid sheet, the trade-in's only 80,000, not 95?
Yeah.
Well, this is because this is what was budgeted versus the actual.
Right, but for the official motion, I don't know that we need that.
It's not a resolution, but it's still.
Carl, I don't know that we need the trade-in value, do we? We just need to expenditure them out, so the motion's probably okay.
What's, uh, we're, so we're spending 377 on two trucks, what's the normal? Like if we would go back to buy a truck like we had today, what would be a normal cost of that? Are these that much more expensive or?
Yeah, we would've been above, I think, what we had budgeted or around that, and that was a little over $406,000.
These are cheaper than ones we have now?
Yep, because of the configuration of these, this chassis, you don't have to cut into the frame and redo the cab with a stand-up cab, so that drastically reduces your cost.
Okay. Well, this, I mean, like you said, currently, they have to get out every time, line up the thing, hit the button, all that stuff. As you said, probably 25% of the time, they'll still have to get out, but you think this will help speed up trash pickup at all or just make it just easier in general to?
I think it, I think it'll do both. I think it, the other thing it'll do is that we'll be able to get out there and keep a constant pace because you don't have that stepping out all the time, worrying about the conditions that they're stepping on and just by the end of the day, the, the physical toll that it takes on the employee's body.
And if we can train the public a little bit too, that can speed it up.
And that's what we, with it being 10 months out, we look at, we can do some public information out there to, on proper setting of your container and then dealing with the bags, get them to train to set it on top and our guys get good enough that it'll minimize them having to get out of the cab.
Run that video on the TV channel, I'll watch it every day. So, I mean, what, what kinda, I guess what kinda, maybe I'm worth thinking, it's like safety things, like, so guys in the cab driving, is there like a camera, so you, okay, so you can see what he's grabbing?
There'll be, there's, be a camera that they'll be able to see the arm going out, what it's reaching. That'll switch when that comes back into, inside the hopper to see what they're emptying. And then also, there'll be a camera on the, be the regular driver's side that'll come on, that they'll be able to see if there's anything on their left side as they're sitting in the right side driver's seat.
Cool. So don't put anything in the trash site, you're not supposed to, right? Cause it'll be on camera. Good to know.
Well, thank, thank you. Any public input on this before we vote? All in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Opposed with no. Unanimously approved. Regular business item number four is a suggested motion to purchase a new jetback truck for cleaning and televising our city's sewer system. I think we're looking back for comments.
Well, we'll start out with Elliott Equipment bid a demo truck, but was contingent upon it being available. And just on our bid summary here, it, it got sold probably the day, day or the day after they submitted the bid. So that's no longer an option. So our recommendation is to, again, go with the company Truck Country and go with the net low bid of 211,000. So this is a situation where, where again, we've got very good bids, the existing machine is 12 years old, I believe. So again, looking at when is the optimum time to trade it off. So we're getting a very good trade-in, we're getting a very good, good price on this piece of equipment. And, you know, this is a piece of equipment that if you didn't have a trade-in, is gonna run you $370,000. So it's a major investment, it's a very crucial piece of equipment to be able to televise, clean, maintain our sanitary sewer systems.
So you would've preferred though to have the other one?
The advantage is you would've gotten it right away. There is a 10-month fabrication delivery time on the new machine. So, but we're, again, we're still gonna, 10 months out, they're giving us $160,000 trade-in, so.
Otherwise, it's the same unit, same chassis.
Exactly.
We're getting a brand-new one for 6,000 more.
Correct.
Exactly.
Instead of a used one, which probably not that used, but this is the one you see like on the streets when there's, there's some flooding and you got the big hose down in there and you see that quite frequently when it.
We could have a video of that, but.
Do you have a video?
No, I was coming up for a video. I've seen it.
That's a step below the garbage truck.
The thing about the demo is that generally that meets your specifications, but there would've been some items on there that wouldn't quite be exactly what we would've wanted. The hose reel would've been off the side of the truck and that can generally be a problem when you're trying to position that up against or around a manhole when you're in the middle of the street.
So you, had that been available, you'd probably still, you probably still would've recommended the new one, I would hope, probably?
Yeah, if, if it had been the hose reel in the front, we probably, and been available, we would've went with that.
We're crescendoing to a motion.
Move approval of purchase of 2015 Freightliner Camel 200 jetback truck from Truck Country of Cedar Rapids, Iowa for the net purchase price of 211,654, 211,654, including $70,000.
So we, at, the motion ends at 654. Second, please.
Second.
Council discussion further. Public input before we vote. All in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Opposed with no. Unanimously approved that we will be purchasing the new jetback.
My staff and I greatly appreciate the council's support.
You're welcome.
If you'd like a show and tell when they're here for, we can organize that.
They're always ready.
Make your own videos.
Regular business, item number five is resolved to use Chosen Valley Testing to do material inspection and testing for our new public service center. Your city administrator, you want to add any comments before we motion?
Nope, I think it's pretty, fairly self-explanatory.
Motion, please.
Move Resolution 1510 approving an agreement for material inspection and testing services with Chosen Valley Testing Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa for $8,318 and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement for the Public Services Center for Operations and Disaster Response.
Second, please.
Second.
Council discussion.
The only question I have and kinda goes to the, does not exceed type question, when I read it, it reads estimate this, estimate that, so is this really a true bid or will we see some adjustments at the end of the project based on whatever?
Yeah, this is not a not-to-exceed contract, this is an estimate. So, you know, it is what it is.
So for some reason, they have to come back and do an additional test, there'll be an up charge, if they don't do as many, there'll be a deduction, that type of adjustment or?
Right. They, again, they, they map out everything that, that they're going to do that they anticipate. Like, we estimate 28 concrete pores, including 13 for the footing, two for the foundation walls, 12 for the slab on grade. So they've really gone through and scrutinized the effort that's gonna be put into it. So I, I don't really see any substantial changes. Oftentimes, what, what's required is that, let's say, a soil compaction test fails and the contractor has to rework the soil and get it retested, the contractor's responsible for the retest cost.
Public input before we vote. Roll call vote, please.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Resnichak.
Yes.
Nyandor.
Yes.
Gade.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Resolution 15-10 unanimously approved. Regular business, item number six is resolved to approve the signed contract bonds and certificate of insurance that we received back from Peters Construction. I think this is fairly routine. City administrator, any comments?
This would be just authorizing the go-ahead of the contract with Peters Construction. We did the bid at our last meeting and now these are the official documents.
They backed and signed and we are ready to approve the assigned.
Anything else, Mike?
Everything's in order.
Motion, please.
I move Resolution 1511, approving contract bonds and certificate of insurance from Peters Construction of Waterloo, Iowa, for the amount of $3,511,596 for option C, which was approved by council on September 23rd, 2013, and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract for the Public Services Center for Operations and Disaster Response.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion's second, council discussion.
This one too, this was an actual bid, right? But like this one do, does say estimated cost of, but they actually bid this out, right? Is that?
Correct. That's, that's right. And, and so then that's why they do the progress updates, is they go along and they adds and the deducts for the finalization.
But does this have a not-to-exceed amount on it?
No, there are some items that are unit pricing that are involved. Very, very rarely do we ever have a lump sum contract.
Public input before we vote. Mr. Little.
As soon as this vote's taken, the billing of the building is, is a definite go. Nowhere have I seen any funds allocated for paving the driveway from the road to the building in front of the overhead doors or the area around where the salt, the building will be. Our city ordinance requires paving, they can't even be gravel. So I'm wondering where those costs are? And I'm asking this question because the same thing came up when we built the recycling building. We had a building and we had no money set aside to pave. Then, then we had to rely on an interdepartmental loan to do the paving. It's kinda, kinda hid the overall cost of what the building, final cost of the building and, and preparation ended up to be. So I'm wondering where, where is the cost for the, the paving to get from the road to the building and in the areas behind the building to the salt track and that kinda stuff?
Stay right there. Mr.
Well, if, if he's done with his questions, I'll, I'll respond to him.
You, you're done?
Nope. Just wanna know how you're gonna get into the building, once you build it.
I say, but that's, you have another question or is that it on this one?
No, that's, that's it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll start with a little bit of history on the recycling building. At the time, we were doing annual transfers over and it was, the decision was made to postpone the paving to coincide with another annual transfer. So that was intentionally done, the council's fully aware of it and it was planned. With this project, it is incorporated all the paving with the exception of the very, very back end. So we're doing two-thirds of all the paving work as part of this project, it's in the bid that you approved and in the contract that you approved. The, the final one-third would be done with the, the last phase of the building project, like maybe in 2020.
Thank you.
Okay?
Roll call vote?
Nyandor.
Yes.
Resnichak.
Yes.
Gade.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Resolution 15-11 is unanimously approved. Other business, item number seven is resolved to set a public hearing for February 16th to consider vacating and sale of the Third Avenue Northwest between 7th and 8th Street and the alley right-of-way in Block 67, not division, that's just north of there, to Wortburg College. City administrator, I think we need a little comment, which would be.
Sure. We're setting the public hearing for the 16th and at that time, we're gonna do a, a number of transactions with Wortburg. So we'll be doing the purchases for the easement for the right-of-way or for the dry run project. We'll be buying a triangle of property from them, or not, where we'll be acquiring that, acquiring that from them up on 20th where the box culvert's gonna go in. And so we had to set the hearing and then we can do it all at the same time on the 16th.
For the public, this is, this is land that they're all already using.
Third Avenue is, is.
You look on the map and it's all.
Third Avenue was a street that, as we've been told, at one point in time was going to be purchased by the college, but there was still a resident living on it. And so it was decided at that time that Wortburg would help with the maintenance, but it would continue to be a public street. Now that that's all Wortburg property and, and Wortburg use, this is a separate transaction than cleaning up some of those issues that we had with title work due to the bonds earlier. some of those issues that we had with title work due to the bonds earlier. And so now is the time to address this one separately and place a value on it similar to the value we did for St. Paul's and move it forward. So that's a little more on this specific one.
Do we know if their intent is to maintain it as a street or?
Well, they've already refinished it, they've already improved it. And I think they're just going to keep it as is. It won't change in any way, the way they're using it right now.
Basically driveway and a parking lot.
They're shoveling the snow, they're doing everything.
It's an access question though.
Yeah. Again, this isn't meant to be a negative anyway, but there's parts of campus that are very hard to get to with emergency vehicles, those type of things. So I would hope they would maintain this as a passable street to get to the interior part of campus.
That's their intention.
Influence them in any weather to do that.
Well, they asked someone here probably for that public hearing, maybe, maybe not.
We can ask.
Rich can be here if he's asked to, I think.
I agree with Dan, it'd be nice to, I can totally see that point, thinking about that part of campus.
The end of that Third Avenue is that big circle.
Yep.
And I think they intend to keep this.
It's the only way the trucks right now can get into for food, for dining service, so they're big trucks going in.
Soon because of the other campus type things going on.
Then we may not need them.
If we can help influence that, it would be great.
And that alley is in the block that is, the north half of that is where we're going to have the dry run. So it's just the alley in the middle of that block. We're going to take, we're going to be using part of their northern part of the alley or part of that block. So we're just going to give them the alley at this point so they own everything south of the dry run in that block.
You're talking Seventh Street Northwest and Sixth Avenue.
There you go, thanks.
Someone like to make a formal motion?
I guess I'll move Resolution 1512, send a public hearing on the vacation and sale of real estate located at Third Avenue Northwest between Seventh Street and 8th Street Northwest and the alley right of way in block 67, not addition to Wortburg College for $5,227 for February 16th, 2015 at 7:00 PM in the Ivan Ike Ackerman Council Chambers.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion second, council discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Cangis.
Yes.
Nyandorff.
Yes.
Gade.
Yes.
Resnichak.
Yes.
Resolution.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Abstaining. Resolution 15-12 is unanimously approved. Regular business, item number eight is the approval of the mayor pro temp for this present year. And I've asked Tim Cangis if he would, Cangis, if he would repeat as the mayor pro temp he has accepted. Is there a motion?
I move approval of Tim Cangis for mayor pro temp.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify with yes.
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 Opposed with no. Thank you, Tim, for your great work for the year and doing all that you do and behind the scenes doing so much. Appreciate it, very valuable role. Regular business, item number nine is to prove council liaisons to the boards and commissions for public cable communications. We're going to ask Chris Nyandorff to continue municipal housing commissions, Dan Lampy. Economic development commission is Dan McKenzie, Waverly Senior Center, Dan McKenzie. Utility board, electric utility board to the trustees is Chris Nyandorff. Public safety board, which comes under different names, it's the law board, Dan McKenzie and David Resnichak. Heritage Days will be Dan Lampy. Hazard mitigation, river use commission, Chris Nyandorff. Waverly Chamber of Commerce is Dan McKenzie and I helped there as well. Library board is Edith Waldstein. Airport commission is Tim Cangis. Historic preservation commission is Wes Gade. Golf commission, Wes Gade. Leisure services commission, Chris Nyandorff. The W advisory board, Chris Nyandorff. Planning and zoning commission is Tim Cangis and Edith Waldstein. And the zoning board of adjustments is Tim Cangis. Is there a motion?
I move the council liaisons to be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor signify with yes.
On Waverly Heritage Days, Waverly Heritage Days is not a board or commission of the city of Waverly and I don't see any reason why we need a council liaison. And if you do need to ask questions or know what's going on in that committee, I will always be at this meeting. I've missed one meeting in nine years, so I think that proves that I will be here and you can ask me about anything you want to know.
We have traditionally appointed somebody for that and it's also because the financial.
Contribution.
Yeah, support that we, the city, gives to the Heritage Days Committee.
Very similar to Waverly Senior Center.
Yeah, Carla, was that 2010 that there was a motion or a resolution passed by council that if funds were received, there was a person assigned to it to oversee the activities?
Yes, it was the same one that Mr. Little referred to earlier, Resolution 10-94.
Will we be having a council liaison going to Wortburg College to determine where the 600 grand and 150 and 120, 120?
That would be Chris Nyandorff with the advisory board.
Does he sit on the board of directors to see where that money's going though?
He's a voting member.
Yes.
I mean, a council liaison for, it's just someone to go to the meetings and.
Dwayne, why?
It's not a voting, it's not a, we're not assigned a voting position, your meetings are public.
Well, what you're doing is putting a council person at board director's meetings.
Gary Borum went for years and he was a liaison.
Why wouldn't, Dwayne, why wouldn't you want a liaison? I mean, wouldn't that make for better communication?
Well, I'd ask the same question, why wouldn't Wortburg College want a liaison to see where that money's going?
We do have one.
No, you don't. You have, you have an advisory board member that votes, but you don't have a council liaison that says where there's almost nine or some thousand dollars a year going in public money to the college. We have no idea where that money's being used at. And that's the purpose of a liaison to, to a board or commission is to see what's going on in that board or commission and where money is being spent. We're not, Heritage Days is not a board or commission of the city.
Well, the W advisory board is supposed to be what you're saying it is, but it's more of, when I was on it, they kind of gave you an update of the rec programs and those kind of numbers and membership numbers and things, but didn't get down in the details of the dollars, but that was the purpose of the advisory board.
Talking about membership as opposed to what dollars went for.
Right, but that would need to be taken up with that board and make sure that that board is doing what they're supposed to be doing. They are, when I was on it, you do get the vote, so, we never had a vote in the year I was on, but if there was something come up to a vote to change fees or whatever like that, the council would actually get the vote on that. On the rest of them, you know, on the golf commission, they raise fees and lower fees and I don't have a say in it, but at least I'm able to explain to council why they did those things, so.
But that's a direct, it's a direct division of the city, the golf course is. We're a standalone nonprofit corporation.
Yeah, well, I mean, you could say, I'm on the historic preservation committee, I don't think that has anything to do with the city, but.
Well, yes, it does, because they're determining what the city's going to do in classifying areas and stuff.
Right. But, yeah.
We also appoint to the senior center too, Dwayne, because we contribute to that.
But the city has an interest in the senior citizen, because if the senior citizen ever went.
I think we have an interest in Heritage Days.
Well.
I guess until the resolution changes, this is where we are.
I mean, your meetings are public, so anyone can come to them.
No, they're not public.
They're not?
No, they're nonprofit, we're the same as any other nonprofit.
So what you're suggesting is that if, because of the rules we've passed, we need to ask for a council member to attend your meetings, you're suggesting that you're not willing to do that, so.
No, I'm suggesting we'd have to change our articles in corporation.
You can, I can finish the question. So you're suggesting that because you don't want a council member to attend your meetings, you're withdrawing your request for funding?
We can just close the whole event down and wipe the whole economic development issue right off the map. If that's your preference.
Our preference is to help assist with a great community event and because of your ask, we have rules to follow and that's to allow a liaison to attend your meetings.
So you're putting your liaison on our board of directors, which requires us to, it requires us to modify our articles in corporation.
To be a board director, he is a visitor to your meetings.
We don't have visitors to the meeting because they're not public.
Guess you're not looking for the assistance of the council with budget dollars.
Well, it appears the council isn't willing to increase the budget dollars anyway. It didn't show up into the Saturday's meeting.
Ran out of time. Yeah, we didn't get to that. Is there, is there a concern, maybe, I guess I, maybe he asked the question, but.
What's that?
Is there a concern of having someone visit the meetings?
No, it's a concern that we ask for, the public, our customers have asked for a Sunday type events. There's no revenue stream for a Sunday event to the committee. So we're, we're putting out our operating capital to do a Sunday event and in the process, that would eventually just dissolve us because we'd run out of money over a period of time. That's why the additional asking in our request to the city was so that we could do the Sunday events in Coleman Park that people seem to want, but don't seem to want to put up the money for it.
Right, and that will come up in our next Saturday with all the other requests.
Yeah, we didn't do any requests last Saturday because we ran out of time.
Well, then could we table that particular liaison position until after next Saturday?
Why are they even, I don't understand the connection between the two.
The connection of what?
Of dealing with the requests and appointing a liaison. Why, why would one, why would one action depend upon the other?
Because of dollars. So far, there's been no commitment from the city to do those dollars.
I guess I recall during last summer with the separate independent Regbri Commission, you actually asked if you were allowed to see their books because we were giving them, we were donating city money to them. So how is this any different? If we're giving city money.
And I was told no.
Right.
So I'm asking, why am I being asked to disclose that information?
Well, I mean.
That I was told no before on.
We had liaison.
Yeah, we had, I mean, we had a liaison, I mean, that was part of us giving money.
Nobody disclosed their books on the Regbri Committee to me.
And I'm not sure where you're.
Meetings were open to the public, you could have came in.
Well, I'm saying, if it's good for one group, then it should be good for all groups.
We're not asking for your books. I mean, I guess it comes down to, there's been a liaison to the Waverly Heritage Day Committee for how many years? I mean, how many years, since it started probably? I mean, this isn't anything new. I mean, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I'm just saying this is the way it's always been.
Then are you saying now that Regbri will disclose their books to me? Because that's what you're asking me to do for Heritage Days.
Oh, I think the issue, the issue here is whether we're going to appoint Dan Lampy to the Waverly Heritage Days. We ready for the vote. Before we do this, Phil, city administrator, can we arbitrate? I don't know. I'm tempted just to move ahead, Mr. Little, because of the tradition and the importance to the city.
What about the resolution?
I think the challenge is we're bound by the resolution.
It's normal practice if the city gives an organization money to have a city council on at least liaison. And that goes for anything, so.
Yeah.
As far as I'm aware of, I mean, that's when the rule.
And Carla, are you saying that's what the resolution says that you referred to before?
Wes has a copy of it in here, it's right, I can get it out.
Well, that's all right, but that's.
I've known that's been the rule too, but I guess, Dwayne, I just don't see the concern. I mean, no one's going to ask for your books, no one's going to ask for how money's spent, it's just someone.
We can't have a meeting and discuss our financial situation of how we're going to spend money and where it's going to go and that sort of thing if we have an outside person sitting there listening to it. That's disclosing your books. And what's aggravating to me is that I asked for that information from Regbri and I was told no, I couldn't get it because they were a separate entity.
I guess I'm concerned at how your committee works then, is it a private club of people that do this?
We're a nonprofit corporation licensed by the state of Iowa since May 20th of 1988.
And so only select people can be on, how do you get to be on the board for Heritage Days?
I'd have to go back and review our articles in corporation.
Isn't it a volunteer? So how, I mean, is there a secret password you have to know to volunteer to be able to be part of that? Or how, I mean, if the meetings are closed, it's a secret society of some sort, apparently, is what you're kind of getting at.
No, no.
You don't want anybody in.
I'm trying to make the distinction that one group of nonprofit was treated in a certain manner and now you're expecting our group to act in a separate, different manner.
City clerk, would you like to clarify?
Do you want me to read the?
I'd like to hear.
Yeah, please.
After discussion, council changed the last paragraph, the paragraph should read, "Funds may be allocated by the city council in the annual budget to those organizations which are directly involved in city activities such as economic development or business and industry support or which supply direct service to the citizens of Waverly such as to provide transportation and on whose boards the mayor or a city council member by appointment of mayor and/or council sits as a voting member. Funds may also be allocated to groups created by council resolution. No other nonprofit or private group shall receive funds from the city budget."
Well, that's pretty clear.
It's clear and I think that I'd encourage a fresh look at that, Mr. Little. I think we want to be all together as a town, we want to have a fluidity. We don't want the anti-feelings going when Mr. Lampy comes.
Would your board, is your board in agreement that they would not want a liaison? I mean, is everyone in agreement? Then I think the only way to change that is stop the funding, according to our.
What the committee is concerned about is the takeover of the event after it's been built up to an event that's worth taking over. A lot of sweat and tears went into making this event to what it is.
But that insinuates that you have an anti-something going towards the government.
No, 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 no.
We're us, this is, we're Waverly, we're Waverly sitting up here.
I'm telling you what concerns are of some of the committee members. The thing, the issue that I have, and that's why I'm standing here, is a nonprofit that did Regbri had one set of rules on how they disclosed the money and how they made their decisions and that sort of thing. And now you're asking another nonprofit group to behave in a different manner.
How is it different? How is it different?
Because I couldn't get Regbri information.
You're not, you're not the council liaison to the Regbri Committee. I was, I could see those numbers, that's the difference.
Then will you furnish those numbers to me?
No, why would I?
My point exactly.
I'd like to call the question, please.
Well, I mean, I don't understand.
One set of rules for Regbri, one set of rules for Heritage.
If I was a council liaison to the Heritage Day Committee, I wouldn't, I wouldn't give out your numbers to people that asked either. I would respect you, I would, if you don't want that given out.
I'm sure you don't mean this to be anti.
Well, thank you for making my own argument.
It comes off that way to the point, I think we're ready to call the question.
I didn't make an argument.
All in favor signify with yes.
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 Opposed with no, liaisons are approved. We have before us two reports that had quarums. The Bremer Waverly Law Enforcement Board brought us their minutes from December 15th, 2014. Any comments on that? If not, officially received. The senior center calendar has been sent to us, any comments on their calendar? We appreciate their hard work. Officially received. Staff comments.
Just a reminder that this coming Saturday will be our second budget retreat, because that sounds exotic. Saturday morning, again, we'll have a light breakfast around 8:30, we'll run from 9:00 to 12:00 this Saturday. We would like to start with the citizen requests at 9:00 o'clock, so those who are making those know that they can come right then and be heard and then go on about their day. So I know for sure Hank will be here representing the veterans post and Dwayne for Heritage Days and those others that we have in our package. So this Saturday, we'll be covering the rest of the general funds, we'll be focusing on enterprise funds, water, sewer and solid waste and also going over our capital project list.
We're thinking 9:00 to noon again, like last time?
Yeah, 9:00 to noon, noon 05, noon 10, somewhere in that.
That sounds good. I like that you've corresponded these budget meetings around my brother's birthday on like the last couple of years when you did not and it was not. the last couple of years when you did not and it was not fun.
A serendipitous event if ever there was one.
Rad Day 3.2 is Saturday night. Rad Day 3.0 and 3.1 corresponded with budget meetings the next day.
Well, you'll have two things to celebrate.
Okay, any other staff comments?
Well, I love that I brought that up, too, by the way.
Council comments, and I think we better start with Wes on this side. Wes, he needs the floor here.
I already announced that, so anyone's welcome to join with that party. I don't know if I have anything today.
Mr. Wallstein?
I don't.
Nyandorf?
Nope.
Jim? David?
No, I guess one thing I was going to say, you know, we've, to the winter months, you know, we've talked about the city, workers out there scooping snow. One thing we've not talked about is our police force. You know, everything in the news, with everything, I guess I can't help but to think, we've got people out there all day, every day, too. So I think the police force and everything they do, keeping us safe. You know, we had a comment last week, Wes said that, you know, when you call them, they're insanely quick and so forth, and I think we're lucky to have the safe place that we live, so appreciate that.
Take that to the force from the, he's speaking on behalf of the council here.
Just a quick question, when there was snow on the ground, I had gotten a couple of questions about the golf course hill and was it open for sledding and that type of thing. Assuming it may snow again someday.
It will be open next time it snows. What we did was, that was part of a project, we lowered the berm where the old evidence building was in Brookwood Park and put that on the hill to reduce the angle of the slope, and that whole front area is now open to slide down. So the fence was taken down, I believe, today. We'll have staff to take down the sledding hill close signs when it's appropriate.
I think we were going to put some buffers around some of the trees, those-
And they're already up.
Golf commission goes over that real well, has a whole plan for that, so.
I always want to look up that way when I go by it, I always forget to, so I apologize for having to ask.
It's big and brown right now.
I forgot I had one, if I can go back to me or not, am I allowed to have one? I had a citizen contact me, the sidewalk that goes from, I don't know, like Burger King all the way out to Walmart, who's responsible for shoveling the snow off of that sidewalk that goes all the way out to Walmart? And I know there seemed to be some spots that weren't cleaned up very well, and is what I was told.
We do the area between Eighth Avenue on the other side of Burger King up to the driveway, pretty much. Then private property owners are responsible the rest of the way.
Okay, so all those, if there's something wrong in, what would it be? Mark's Auto through Walmart? I mean, those companies are supposed to take care of the sidewalk in front of, even the mini mall and that kind of little area there? Okay.
Right, yeah. Actually, Dwayne's house, so.
Yep, right, okay. Yep, thank you. I just had a question about that.
First, please note that mayor's comments, that Mr. Dan Lampy, as we all know, was elected to that chair, and he is out of town, will be out of town till later in the month, and that's why he's not here tonight, but we wish him a safe return when he gets back. Also, please note that we had Rich Dane presented to us at the beginning about the housing situations in Waverly, and I think we need to keep our radar in the long term on their housing needs, and we thank him for continued interest in that endeavor, and we still look forward to some possible resolutions. We don't always know what they are, but we're going to, keeping a high focus as a council, city commission, and the economic commission on housing, very important, and so we lift that up at the end. That, ask for a motion to adjourn.
Move we adjourn?
Second.
All in favor signify with yes.